This regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I really want to extend a warm welcome to those present and to our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. And I would just ask right now, if you have not already done so, if you could please turn your cell phones to silent. And we really do appreciate the time that you've taken to join us and for your interest in Waco ISD. Este junta reglar de Waco ISD esta convocada, les extiendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presente y los que nos observan por televisión. También les quiero compartir que todas las conferencias está disponible en la página de Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En ese página pueden escoger su idioma así toda la información que se fue a discutirla está disponible para todos. Por favor apájar sus teléfonos. Y les agradecimos el tiempo que compartid con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD. The Board is held by a set of ethics. Pulling it up right here. So one of those ethical standards that we are held to is trustworthiness in stewardship. So we as the Board of Waco ISD will be accountable to the public by representing district policies, programs, priorities, and progress accurately. We will be responsible to the community by seeking its involvement in district affairs and by communicating its priorities and its concerns. We as the Board will work to ensure prudent and accountable use of district resources. And we as the Board will make no personal promise or take private action that may compromise performance or responsibilities of the district. Moving on to item number two, public comment. Do we have any public comment? Okay. Seeing as we have none, we'll move on to item number three, moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. Would you please pause with me as we take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, Thank you.
Leading our pledge tonight are University High students Emily Pagazzo and Alicia Zuniga.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. If the Board members would meet me here in front of the dais.
And now for our special recognitions in tonight's school board meeting. Our first pledge leader tonight is Emily Pagazzo, who is a University High School basketball manager, National Honor Society president, and also plays in the Mighty Trojan Band. If that's, you can go ahead and give her a round of applause. If that's not enough to keep her busy, she's also enrolled in dual credit classes. Emily enjoys spending time with her family, watching movies, and trying new things. She plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University to become a NICU nurse. Thank you, Emily Pagazzo. Our second pledge leader tonight is Alicia Zuniga, who serves as University High's National Honor Society Vice President, is enrolled in dual credit college classes, and participates in the Lighthouse Leadership Program. He also enjoys spending time with his family and plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University to become an electrical engineer. Thank you, Alicia Zuniga. And thank you to our University High School Principal, Dr. Canisha Johnson, for sharing her students with us tonight. We're now ready to recognize our Community Partner of the Month. The Cooper Foundation is recognized with the Texas Association of School Boards Stand Out for Public Education Award as Waco ISD's March Community Partner of the Month. As a dedicated partner to Waco ISD since 1947, the Cooper Foundation has invested in our student schools and community for nearly 80 years. Its generosity has made countless opportunities possible, including the recent GW Carver Middle School Legacy Art Installation Project and funding for new uniforms for University High Schools mariachi band, the Troy Hano's. Tonight, we proudly recognize Felicia Goodman, Director of the Cooper Foundation, as she accepts this well-deserved honor on behalf of the foundation. We are profoundly grateful to the Cooper Foundation's unwavering commitment to Waco ISD and the lasting impact it continues to make on our students' lives. Thank you, Cooper Foundation. And it is spring, which means our students are competing and showing off everything that they have learned this year. We're going to begin with some fine arts awards. And the first is our mock trial courtroom artist. Waco High School student Tyrone McNary advanced to the state mock trial contest representing Region 12 in the category of courtroom artist. We have his original artwork on display tonight. You can also see it up on the screen. Tyrone placed sixth in the state of Texas for his live mock trial illustration. Waco High has advanced a courtroom artist to the state contest three of the last four years. Tyrone's art teacher is Mr. Joel Colosimo, and his principal is Mr. Joseph Alexander. The Texas High School Visual Arts Scholastic Event draws more than 35,000 entries across the state each year, with less than 3% advancing to the state level. We are excited to share that we have several students whose artwork earned superior ratings at the regional level and advanced to the state contest. We begin with the recognition of our VACE qualifiers tonight with Waco High School. Several of them could not join us this evening due to their work schedules, but we have with you this evening Lydia Gilmore, a junior at Waco High, also a state VACE medal winner in 2024. You also see her artwork in the boardroom tonight. These students are instructed by Waco High art teachers Joel Colosimo, Tracy Winter, and Bonnie Holstrom. Mr. Joseph Alexander serves as the Waco High Principal. Our next honoree is University High School student Ariel Stone, who advanced to the state contest with her piece, Reading Toward Big Dreams. You see it up on the screen before you, and it is currently being judged, so it is not with us this evening, and we have our fingers crossed for Ariel. Ariel is instructed by UHS art teacher Holly Catwell. Congratulations to all of our fine arts winners tonight from both University and Waco High And this is a banner year because for the first time in several years, people were trying to count back, but I don't think they had enough fingers, we have not qualified students for the state speech and debate competition. But this year, we did. Waco High School students Daniella Mercado and Brianna Herring advanced to the state debate competition this year. These young women began working in November, three times a week during their win time, to prepare for the February competition. Again, this is the first time that we have qualified students in at least a decade at the state level. The students are coached by teacher James Settles, and Mr. Joseph Alexander serves And we have one more VACE student who qualified for state to recognize tonight. Jacqueline Trevino is a junior at Waco High School and a state VACE medal winner, qualifying two years consecutively for VACE. Now remember, fewer than 3% of the 35,000 actually make it to the state level. Jacqueline's artwork is on display here tonight. Congratulations to Jacqueline Trevino of Waco High School. And now we're ready to recognize some of our staff who have also excelled at the state level. The Waco ISD Purchasing Department is honored with the Texas Association of School Business Officials Purchasing Award of Merit. This department is one of only 77 districts out of more than 1,200 in the state of Texas meeting this criteria. This is the 17th consecutive year that the Waco ISD Purchasing Department, led by Director Michelle Tisch, has earned the award. Waco ISD is one of only two districts in the entire state of Texas to have accomplished this. Congratulations to the purchasing team. Receiving the award tonight are Director Michelle Tisch, Judy Monroe, Valeria Simmons, and Shelley Yaschek. The Waco ISD Communications Department staff recently captured 29 state awards at the Texas School Public Relations Conference. Television producer Jesse Batello won two Best of Show Awards, so those are medals, four Gold, and five Silver Awards, and has captured, listen to this, approximately 200 TESRA Awards during his 27 years with Waco ISD. I believe Jesse celebrates his 27th year here on May 5th in Waco ISD. Media specialist Michael Anderson could not be with us this evening, but won one Gold, one Silver, and one Bronze Award in his first year at TESRA. And you just shook the hand of Executive Administrative Assistant Quinto Robinson, who won three Gold Awards and one Silver Award in her first year at TESRA. And the communications team collectively won one Gold and three Silver Awards. The team also earned two Crystal Awards, the highest TESRA honor that you can receive, including a Crystal Certificate of Merit Award for its publicity surrounding advanced academics and for its partnerships with coordinators Stephanie Hines, Quinto Robinson, and Wendy Sled.
The Miss Wendy Sled here won six Gold Awards, one Silver, one Bronze, resulting in Wendy earning 140 TESRA Awards in her 10 years of public education. Please give her a round of applause. The communications team collectively won one Gold and three Silver Awards. The team also earned two Crystal Awards, the highest honor, including a Crystal Certificate of Merit Award for its publicity surrounding advanced academics partnerships. Coordinator Stephanie Hines, Quinto Robinson, and Wendy Sled earned the coveted Crystal Commendation Award for the publicity of Waco ISD's partnership with Starz Book Club. What isn't written in here is there are only five Crystal Awards, and every district within the state competes for those, and our district won two of the five.
And I want to thank Dr. Kary Dean for filling in as our photographer tonight. Thank you very much. If we could just clone ourselves, we've been talking about that today. Thank you all, Board of Trustees, Dr. Spicer.
It is always fun giving awards and recognizing everyone's hard work. And to our communications team, we are so deeply grateful for all of the hard work you guys do. And I think the entire state can recognize that with all those awards. Okay, let's move on to item number five, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Spicer.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, President Cordwick. This month, more than 300 students and many of our campus and district staff enjoyed another successful year of Waco ISD Men's and Women's Empowerment Summits. Students attended informational breakout sessions, heard from motivational speakers, and had the opportunity to engage with district and community leaders. As a first-time attendee to these special events, I was filled with so much pride at how our community's investment in our students often stretches beyond what we can see. Many thanks to our Baylor University, the Junior League of Waco, all of our distinguished speakers, and the many community partners and volunteers that provided the incredible experience for our students. I would also like to thank those of you who were able to attend. And finally, I would like to thank our Executive Director of Student Support Services, Ms. Yolanda Williams, for coordinating all of those events for us. TASB Governance. Right before spring break, I had the humbling opportunity to attend the TASB Governance Camp with some of our seniors. These incredible students from both Waco High and University High spoke to board members and educators from across the state of Texas. To say I was proud is an understatement. Speaking in front of adults is difficult as an adult, but for our students, it takes an extra level of courage to share their perspectives and their experiences. During their session, it was tech, T-E-C-H, teaching with electronics and its impact on cognitive horizons. I was blown away by their observations, their insight, and their wisdom. The audience was just as impressed. They asked so many questions afterwards and even requested their slide deck. Listening to our students challenged me in the very best way, and it was also a great reminder. We are here to serve, not only our faculty and staff, but more importantly, our students. Every decision, every process we put in place must always come back to our students. I want to thank Mr. McAdoo, Ms. Milliken, and Ms. Clark for supporting our students in developing this impressive, informative presentation. And they will be sharing this presentation next month, well, it's not April yet, in May, with our principals, because we think they need to hear what they shared too. So we're very excited about that. Our students, Superintendent Student Advisory Committee meetings. Seeking out student input and making sure we are elevating their voices is at the heart of the Superintendent Student Advisory Committee. These meetings are always the highlight of my work on most of the days, especially on the hard days. Last week, students from both Waco High School and University High School provided input on block scheduling and ways that we can improve it for the coming '25-'26 school year. The block scheduling place that's currently, was a topic, came up frequently throughout my initial visits, through thought exchanges, and from our students and parents and our staff. So that's something that we have the opportunity to modify next year. I look forward to speaking with my middle school SSAC group next week before taking recommendations back to our principals for some final planning discussions as we work on master schedules for the upcoming school year. Legislative update. On Tuesday, Trustee Davis, Trustee Patton, and I had the opportunity to represent Waco ISD and our community at the state Capitol to advocate for our students, our staff, and our families. This visit was an opportunity to build relationships and have important conversations with our elected officials and their staff. We spoke with key legislators, sat in on public education hearings, and had the opportunity to be recognized by Representative Curry on the House floor. While the conversations were valuable, it was listening to Osmar, Diego, Giselle, and Stephanie, our University High and Waco High students that accompanied us, that truly made the impact. Each student had a unique and important story to share about the choice and opportunity to have school in Waco Independent School District. They spoke directly to our legislators about the quality of education they're receiving and the incredible educators that serve in our schools. At this time, Mr. Patton or Mr. Davis, would you like to say anything about our trip to
We logged well over three and a half miles in the Capitol, burning those calories, and probably about 25 flights of stairs. It was good. We had some really positive interactions with our legislators. We shared pertinent information that applies to the district. And our students that went were probably, not probably, were definitely better than the adults at conveying the message, the importance of funding, and making good, solid, conscientious decisions for public education. I was impressed with the students. I was impressed with our visit. We still have work to do, and as a Board, I'm challenging us to be more of an advocate when it comes to us going to Austin and talking to DC. And that's something that we will put as a goal for this Board. But it was a good experience, and overall, a very positive one. Jeremy?
I enjoyed the trip. I think we went down there with a mission, and that was to have clear conversations with our legislators about school funding. And that was my main purpose of attending, and I think we were able to communicate that message well to our legislators. Thank Representative Davis, and Representative Curry, and Representative Orr, and Representative Tyler Rico for taking time to speak with our students. It meant a lot to them and us, and we look forward to the work that they will do for public schools in the future.
Thank you for going and doing that. I know that it can be time-consuming and looking for ways to kind of help advocate for our students, I think is always top priority for this Board. Okay, moving on to number six, information items and reports. Mr. Grant, do you have any questions?
No.
Any discussion? Mr. Davis?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Vedonia?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Gillery?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Cheryl, I have one question. For year-to-date, where are we supposed to be on the percentage points? On the percent... Sorry, I didn't have a chance to ask you earlier.
Well, it actually just depends on like the function. Function 11, you'll be much further ahead in your spending than you would say on a function 41 where you're a full year. So it just kind of depends on whether you're talking about revenues, you're talking about expenditures.
On expenditure side.
So yeah, that would just depends on the function and the pattern of expenditure for the year.
Okay. Would you say, if I'm looking at it, probably in the 50s? 50 percentile?
Well, you probably should be a little bit ahead of that for function 11. You'll probably be a little bit behind that for like function 41 or 21 or something.
Yep, perfect, okay.
Are we on a normal schedule?
Yes.
That's great.
Yeah, I just couldn't quite remember where we would kind of be-ish. Okay, great, thank you. That's it. Okay, moving on to item number seven, consent agenda. Mr. Grant, would you like anything pulled?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Vedonia?
No.
Mr. Gillery?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Mr. Patton?
No, ma'am.
Okay, hearing that, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, and I'll get the second from Mr. Davis. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Ms. Davis, sorry about that. I made you get up and sit down. If you come on up for number eight review and discuss budget updates, sorry about that. She definitely is getting her stuffs in.
Okay, so we just have a rather short presentation tonight. It's, I'd hope we might have a little bit more information from the legislature on some revenues and all, but we don't really have anything, and we're still working through a lot of our projections for costs as well. So we're going to look a little bit again at what it looks like our enrollment and attendance will be for next year, and then, well, for current year, and our revenue and expenditure. We looked at revenues last month. This month, we'll look a little bit more at where it looks like at the end of January we're going to end for expenditures, and so kind of the impact on fund balance. And when we do this, remember, I'm always really conservative because this is a very volatile time to try to do it in January. And then we're going to talk a little bit about another problem we've had with the reporting of our property values that's going to impact some that we've had to appeal. Then we'll look at some preliminary estimates for '25-'26 as we know them, and then talk a little bit about some of the bills we're watching from a finance standpoint. So looking at this real quick, again, our enrollment, we had a revised budget of $13,294. Our projected actual is $13,366. That's up 72 kids in enrollment. If you recall, last month, when I was reporting this, our average daily attendance was also up about 70. We're at the end of the third six weeks. At the end of the fourth six weeks, after we had those very cold weeks, we're now down two. But it's very close to what I had projected for budget purposes. We, I don't know if we're going to apply for some waivers on some days, I believe we are, so that might improve our attendance somewhat.
Pardon me, Mr. Evans.
Pardon me, Mr. Davis, when do we do that for the TEA waiver for that, absences? Okay, so there is a delay on that. Super. Thanks.
And as we talked about last time, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit more, our comptroller's property value study, we were very close, only 0.3%, difference from what our preliminary values came out at the end of January. We won't get final values until the end of July. But remember, those values that we get at the end of the July are the ones that impact the current year's revenue, not next year's revenue. So we don't really know that till the end of the year. But we're going to talk about those, because there's a problem with them. Our revenues, again, we're, it looks like right now, we're up about $4 million. Got a concern with some of the student counts that we're looking into, just to make sure on that. Our foundation school program is up about 3 million, three and a half million. Mostly special ed, about two, a little over 2 million of that is special ed at this point. Our maintenance and operations property tax collections are down about a million and a half. But our earnings on investment are up, look like they're going to be up about 1.7. Remember, we have lowered that a lot, because they're supposed to be lowering the interest rates. That didn't really happen, just started to happen a little bit now. So we have earned a lot more money than we thought we would. So we're up there. On the expenditure side, right now, we did amend in about 15 million at this point. So, well, sorry. We amended in enough to take us to about 15 million on budget deficit, but we're underspending that by about a million three. So let's look at kind of, well, our other resources and uses are about the same. The change in fund balance, right now, looks like the revised budget is 12.9 million dollars deficit. We started out with about an $8 million deficit when we amended in those other, the carryover of projects that we talked about, buses and all, which all the buses have now come in. It brought it up to about 13 million. Right now, it looks like we'll only underspend about 7.3 million, which is more what we kind of expect. We always underspend four or five million dollars. Again, that's early. That's July, that's January. Okay, so, don't hold me to that number. Anyway, so the various right now is about 4, 5.7 million. So what happened with the comptroller's office, they have, on March 14th, they sent something out, notified the districts, that the portion of the self-reported data was reported incorrectly. It's specifically that value lost due to the freeze compression on the over 65 homesteads. This, they have opened it up for districts to appeal these values. That tells you that it was the comptroller's office mistake, because they never do a special open, appeal for something like this. You usually have to go through the regular appeal process. So our delinquent tax attorney notified us right away, and we have already filed that appeal. We did that immediately, because they are going to look at, on a first-come, first-served basis, to get us new numbers. So I'm not sure what the impact of that is going to be. All he would say is, we'll pick up some money. So I don't know how much or anything else, but that was, again, they did say that they sent it out to, this is some districts. They told them in the letter that it happened to some districts. When they asked for the list, so they could contact their clients, there was 1,200 districts on the list. So that's pretty much all districts. Okay, so looking a little bit at our preliminary estimates for 25, 26, we do have some, look, we have some early estimates. These will change as we go through the next two, six weeks of attendance, but right now, it looks like we will be projecting attendance of 11,526 compared to the attendance we're projecting right now of that 11,643. So that would result in a $2.2 million loss in state foundation school program revenues under current law. Now, you know, depending on what happens in the legislature, I think there's going to be, in any way you look at it, there's going to probably be some funding coming, but under current law, that's what we, where we would be. Not good news when you already have a deficit, and didn't do salary increases last year. So some of our preliminary cost increases that we have already identified, we do have some, actually, some good news here on utilities. They look pretty flat overall for this coming year. As I talked about last time, you know, electricity, we don't have big, huge increases, because we bought electricity out so far. The big increases were really more in water and gas, particularly gas, but I want to relook at that, because it seems higher than I thought it would be. Fuel, we also have a decrease in telephones. We bid telephones this year, so we've got significant savings there. Because of the savings in telephones, I think that'll offset the gas and water increases. So I think that's going to be very flat at this point. On gasoline, we're looking, this is also, you know, a projection from the U.S. Energy Information Administration. They're currently projecting a decrease in both gas and diesel for 2026. So hopefully, as much as 6% they're saying, so hopefully, we won't have any increase there. So they give us, we don't have a lot of gas, but should give us about $25,000 savings. The health fund, after the first six months, is currently breaking even. We did increase our contribution last year. We didn't do it the year before, but we did increase it this, this year. We are going to, we've only got two months of that increase, though, because the increase started January. It didn't increase in the first four months of the year. So the fact that we're breaking even looks pretty good right now. Our, we've met with our consultant, we meet with them on a monthly basis, and so they're already starting to do some projections. We'll probably have something late April or early May from them on what they think it's going to look like. And then the increase in our, the one thing that we will have a cost increase, probably, is that increase in state revenue, the increase in the numbers of students for special education. We will need to put some of that money back into special ed as we have the last couple of years. So that looks like that could be about 1.3 million to be allotted in next year. We're working, I have calculated this week, our maintenance of effort that we have to do for special ed. We look good in the current year, but we may need to put some money in for next year.
Ms. Davis, does that, going back to slide two, special ed, does that also include the money that's being taken away for, by the government for the incorrect state, across the state for special ed?
Well, I think that's already, that-
Has that already been done?
For SARS?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes. That is a separate budget, that revenue source. It's a federal revenue source. Now, that is something I did not include on here at this point in time. I kind of talk about it a little bit when we get to legislation. I mean, we don't talk specifically about SARS.
Has that already occurred, though? Has that money already been taken?
We've already lost what we are going to lose-
Okay.
-under that 2011 audit. And it did reduce us, it built into the current year's budget, was just about a million and a half in revenue, where we used to get about 2 and 1/2 million. So we've got that built into the current year, but of course, SARS is under Medicaid. So that's going to be a question, I think, in our minds on whether we'll have SARS funding for next year or not.
Okay, thank you.
Those have already been projected in those utilities, and I think that's also why you don't, why they're rather flat, because we are seeing savings in those campuses. We did with Carver this year, and I think we'll see that again for next year.
And will we see an offset on insurance as, because they're new buildings?
Well, yes, there will be some increase in the insurance. They are saying, though, that they're not expecting the kinds of increases we had last year. So I've got about a 10% increase that, I kind of skipped over that one, but, you know, 100,000, 150,000, maybe, with those new schools. We have already brought Carver and Tennesse on in insurance, so it will be really Kendrick and Waco High. But yes, Waco High is a big project, so. Okay, so then, some identified cost savings right now. We know with the closure of Alta Vista, there will be some savings with fixed costs, you know, principal, librarian, nurse, those kinds of positions that will be eliminated as they are moved out to Kendrick and South Waco, the kids are. Most of the teachers will move as well, but we do have some of those fixed cost savings, estimating around $700,000 right now with that. And then, depending on the decision that the board makes, the contract for the wraparound services does end in June, and that could be a possible savings of about $740,000 as well.
Is that transformation, Waco?
Yes.
Contract? Okay.
So looking a little bit, again, at that school finance legislation, House Bill Two is still the one that I'm, you know, I really don't like the Senate finance bill. That doesn't do a whole lot for us, but House Bill Two would increase the basic allotment $220, and would generate approximately $4 million of that. If they do increase the basic allotment, what's in the bill, we would need to put about 40% of that increase into compensation. And I know last time, they said that of that, when we did House Bill Three back in 2019, of that, it was 30% at that time. 75% of it had to go to teacher salaries, and then the other 25% to go to other employee groups. So that would, basically 40% of the 4 million would be, and 75% of that would be about a million three, which would do somewhere around 2 and 1/2 to 3% teacher salary increase. Also included in that bill is an increase in the copper penny yield from $49.28 to $51.04, and then enhancements to the teacher incentive allotment. The bill was supposed to have been heard last week, but right now, it's still in committee and still has not been heard. On Senate Bill Four and SGR Two, vehicles, to increase the homestead exemption from that 100,000 to 140,000, and they do now include hold harmless for districts. There was a point in time when those bills were not holding districts harmless, but that is now included in these bills. The Senate Bill 260, which increases the safety allotment, we kind of talked about that. I think this one, I think the House bill is a little bit better, gives, generates a little bit more money. No, maybe this would, this one is 15,000 to 30,000 per campus, and 10 to $28 per ADA. I think the House bill is-
14. Two of the legislators we talked to said it would probably be about $14 difference, and they also, two of the legislators we talked to in Austin, both said that it would be that the basic allotment would be 220, and it's going to be on enrollment, not on attendance, like we were hoping. So-
That'll be good.
It's, I mean, it's still up in the air, but that's what, on attendance. Not, on attendance, not on-
It's not, oh.
Right, right, I'm sorry. Not what we were wanting, but-
Not what we were wanting.
But, but two of the legislators told us that it would be 220, and that the House was expecting like 14 bucks more for security.
I know there's a little bit difference in the per-campus amount on one and the per-student amount on, between the two of them. I think the per-student amount on the House bill went from 10 to maybe 18 rather than 28, but there was a bigger growth on the per-campus amount. So I have not checked those to see what difference it would be at this point. House, one that's of concern is House Bill 19, because it will limit local government debt to a maximum annual debt service in any fiscal year, may not exceed 20% on an amount equal to the average of the amount of property tax collections for the three preceding years. This can be, will be very problematical, especially due to variations in property values. So, and then there's a lot of other things in this bill about notifications and all sorts of things. They're really trying to limit, I think, districts' ability to issue debt. And then on the federal budgets, one of the things that we have had a little bit more concrete at this point, I'm not sure how concrete it is, but because of the, what we do know that came out of the continuing resolution, that they were going to maintain current funding levels on certain of our federal programs, and that will, that's funding for the 25, 26 school year. Title One, Title Four, Title Three, our IDEA for special education, and Perkins for CTE are all supposed to, the basic programs are supposed to remain very flat. And so we're not expecting any more money, but at least at this point, we're not expecting cuts to those programs in next year. However, there are some components not identified in IDEA and our CTE that might be reallocated. And then they said the Title Two would be reallocated as well. And we did receive an entitlement of $525,000 this year in Title Two. So if we don't get Title Two, we'll have to find another source for some of those. That is, used to be what was called the Eisenhower Professional Development Grant. So it really, it does special, professional development for the district. And we do have a couple of positions, I think, funded out of that. But again, I don't know, I don't exactly know what reallocated means either, and where it gets reallocated, but anyway. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Not a lot of news to, but we'll have another presentation next month. Hopefully, we'll know what the revenues are. We will not have our local values by the April meeting. We don't get those till the 30th, but, okay?
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Davis. Appreciate you keeping an eye on all those bills and everything coming through. Okay, moving on to item number nine, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action on committee recommendations for new attendance boundaries. Dr. Spicer?
Yes, ma'am, Madam President. First of all, good evening again. I would like to invite two guests to the podium. Tonight, we have a parent and community member, Mr. Clint Harp, and we also have one of our special education teachers from Dean Highland, Ms. Randy Fowler. They're going to be co-presenting with me, as they were some of our members on the committee who served with us. All right? So we're going to kind of walk you through some historical context first, and then I'm going to pass the mic, so they can kind of go from there. So in 2021, we had a bond program, as you all know, where we looked at a $355 million bond. We had some reconstruction, we had some renovation, five campuses, and then we also had two campus closures. And this is, conversation is about one of those that's coming up with Alta Vista. This information was, we had a long-term, I'll say, facilities plan that did take place prior to this, and that also drove some of the work that you're going to be hearing us talk about today. Demographic projections. So as you know, and if you don't, I'll make sure you're reminded, a lot of our districts outside of Waco ISD even are having declining enrollment. We are not, I'll say, exempt from that. And so as we see job growth, we still have low unemployment rates as well, but our demographics with our students is also decreasing. And so that is also playing a part into some of the conversations that we had with facilities, but also with placement of our campuses, which ones stay open, which ones closes, and which ones we have opportunities for in the future. And so that did inform the work that we're leading today. At this time, Ms. Fowler?
Thank you. Some of the considerations that we were asked to look at as we met were optimizing the space and using those efficient, those buildings more efficiently to reduce the overcrowding and the underutilization of areas, as well as the natural boundaries to, for the awareness of the neighborhoods, the culture in those neighborhoods, and the historical context. One of the big things that came up during our conversations with our considerations was the feeder pattern alignments, where students will stay together as they move through the elementary, middle school, and high school levels, and balancing for the program equity and funding for those things. and funding for those things, and maximizing the school programs at each campus, as well as the future needs to support those campuses and moving forward through the years as part of that bond program. We would meet once a month to review the different maps that were proposed. We split into groups, combines of sixty parents, staff, and community members. Over those five months, we met each week and discussed a different level. So we first started out talking about those elementary maps, the middle school maps, and then going into the high school maps. We discussed how the maps compared to the considerations that we saw on the last slide, talked about what we saw, what we liked, what we wondered. A lot of discussion that came around the community culture, the natural boundaries, the student transportation, and how those boundaries apply to the transportation for students, as well as, again, the feeder programs and the program equity. We looked at what others thought and ultimately what we felt was best for our kids.
Thank you. In addition to the attendance boundary committee, we also hosted a thought exchange, and so that's something new that we have brought to Waco Independent School District, because we want to make sure we get everybody's voice. So yes, she talked about sixty people in the space, in this space right here. We went back out to the community and we said, hey, this is what's going on, we're going to give you an opportunity to just give us feedback. What do you like, what do you don't, what concerns do you have, what suggestions do you have? And we had over a thousand participants give us feedback, four hundred and sixty-two thoughts, and then twelve thousand ninety-nine ratings, and what that means is, anybody in our community who had access to that link could put a thought out there, and all of us can go and we can rate thoughts. I like it, I disagree, one star. I totally disagree, all the way to five stars, I extremely, wholeheartedly agree, and so we got their feedback. We did have over seven hundred parents also respond in that data. What we found in the feedback is our community, their feedback from us aligned with what you all asked as a board. So the considerations that you mentioned earlier, those things were in alignment, so we were pleased with that, because that helped us stay focused on the work and not to kind of stray or go in a different direction than what the board had asked of that committee. Another key point Ms. Sled had brought forward, which she shared with us, was that nearly every single comment, including those that were rated with a singular star, reverted back to our students. So everybody said, just make sure we keep students first in our decision, and I think that was the challenge of the community, and I think we kept that wholeheartedly in our discussions, and so I was very pleased by that feedback, but also proud of what they said, because it's all that matters, our kiddos. So thank you for that. Within the, I'll say, community meetings, we did host three public hearings, and this was our time to go to three school campuses across our district at three different times and just have a hearing. And so what happened was, we provided a script and just said the same thing to make sure they understood, this is what the committee is recommending, please give us feedback. And so in those sessions, some committee members even came, and we presented, and then we stood around the signs so people could just talk and give us feedback. They were able to give us note cards, and on those note cards, they said, hey, these are my questions that we want you to go back and take to the committee, so we did take those. We also, thank you Communications, made a video, and yes, they did script me, and I did follow the script and I stayed on it. I struggled, I didn't like the video, but I did it, thank you. But that was also our time to get feedback again, because if you weren't able to make it, because if you noticed, we had bad weather. One night it started like rain, sleet kind of weather, and another was cold and something else, but we still had them, and we did have people come out, but we wanted to make sure that nobody in our system can say we didn't ask for your voice and your opinion, and so we wanted to make sure we pushed that out. We did create a superintendent email address for people to send in correspondence, and some people took us up on that, so we did use that feedback as well, based off the public hearing feedback.
Thank you, Dr. Spicer.
Yes, sir.
On March eighteenth, we all got back together, once we had all the public meetings and went over all the information, and together we all reviewed and discussed what was discovered through all of those meetings and the feedback. I'm always amazed when a community comes together, especially when you have teachers and principals, Mr. Alexander, Mrs. Freeman, Dr. Henry, Travis with the school buses, you know, everybody that's working hard all day and everybody's still coming, showing up even tonight to continue to support this work, because we took it really serious, sitting down once again on March eighteenth, just to go back over everything and make sure that we really put our attention and focus on everybody's concerns and needs, and voted at that meeting to advance the recommendation to present to you all tonight. So, Mrs. Fowler? We were, we're going to go over the maps now, and Ms. Fowler is going to kick it off with the elementary rezoned maps.
Thank you. So the map that you see here is the current boundaries that we have, and as we were talking earlier, this is where Alta Vista is coming in, and it will be that campus that is closing. So those kids will actually be split into the South Waco and Kendrick boundaries, if you can go to the next. The changes reflected here show the focus on Alta Vista's closure and the increased capacity at Kendrick and South Waco. The green zone you see is going to encompass the South Waco area, South Waco Elementary Attendance Zone, and the cranberry-colored will represent the Kendrick Elementary Zone. The portion of the current Alta Vista Zone that is east of I-35, Woodington, South Waco, and that is, again, taking into consideration that natural boundary for where we split those kids to move into either Alta Vista, or, sorry, into Kendrick or into South Waco. The southern boundary follows the loop of three forty until you get to east, to the east at Tinsley Road, and then follows Flat Creek. If you look at the Kendrick Elementary, the recommendation, Kendrick Zone follows South Valley Mills, and then follows Franklin down to three forty, and then again follows the southern boundary line of the district, which is at North Flat Creek.
Moving on to, well, actually, do we have any questions about the elementary zones? We're going to do that at the end, okay, great. So, moving on to the middle school attendance zones, the West Avenue Elementary Attendance Zone will be moving from the former Indian Spring Middle School, which is now all the GEW Carver Middle School Zone in the brown on the map, to the Caesar Chavez Middle School Zone in the light blue on the map. You will notice that its location is closer to Caesar Chavez than it is to Carver, and it's going to help with some of the balancing of the enrollments, both for middle and high school feeder patterns. The recommended Caesar Chavez Attendance Zone would be expanded down Seventeenth Street to West Waco Drive, just for one block, and then it follows Texas Two Spur to Gorman Avenue until it hits North Twenty-first Street. Then the boundary follows North Twenty-first Street until it hits Colcord. It follows Colcord Street all the way to North Ninth Street, and then it follows eighty-four to the Brazos River, and then it follows the river to I-35, where it meets up with its current zone. The boundary that I just described is the boundary for the West Avenue Elementary School, which is shifting from GW Carver to Caesar Chavez Middle School, and that was one of the most discussed boundaries that we really had to work with because of the split and choosing to keep West Avenue all together instead of splitting it in half like it has been. At the high school level, it's the same changes, so the same street names are changing to include West Avenue Elementary and the Caesar Chavez Middle School to University High School feeder patterns. All right, now, moving on to the high school. For the high school recommended zones, you will see the green shaded area is all University High School, and this attended zone will now include the entire current West Avenue Elementary Zone that is also shifted to Caesar Chavez Middle School. Hopefully all that makes sense. Maintaining this pure feeder for our West Avenue and Caesar Chavez students was important to the committee. The orange section of the map is the Waco High School Attendance Zone. Finally, this last map, for your viewing pleasure, is all of it, all in one glorious map, so very easy to read, as you can see. The final map shows the recommended attendance zones in one single view. Elementary lines are shown in the red outline, high schools are shown in the bolder, blue slash purple outlines, and the middle school are in solid colors, brown, pink, and light blue. All right? So, the hope would be, with the implementation of these new maps, would be that we would actually put these in place for two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year. One of the discussions that we had was focused around the grandfathering issues that need to be discussed, and those are things that are currently being talked about and considered for the upcoming transfer window that's going to be coming up in two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six. Also being reviewed is the Caesar Chavez Middle School Facility Review, so that is something that is being discussed, because in our discussions, Caesar Chavez was well-represented, and there are great concerns due to overcrowding that they feel could be happening. They're nervous about that, and we understand that, and so as a committee, we all discussed that at length and threw out some recommendations to hopefully help with those concerns. There was discussion, and will be further discussion, over assessing the special programs at Kendrick, South Waco, and West Avenue Elementarys to ensure the support of the impacted students, and as well developing updated bus routes. And if you've never talked with Travis, who is over there in the green, about the bus routes and the team that makes up the transportation, you know, team in this city, you should. He's a great guy, and his team is great, and they work really well together and do a lot to move a lot of kids safely all throughout this town, and we're really proud of that work. Mrs. Fowler?
The additional committee priorities we're looking at are the middle school advanced academic programs, something that was brought up consistently in both our meetings as well as the public hearings, was having those programs available at all of the middle schools versus just having one dedicated campus, which would also help with those numbers and spreading out those students throughout the campus versus having overcrowding at one campus, as well as looking at the transfer policy and practices that come from that, along with the new buildings and everybody wanting to be at those new places. The timeline, communication, implementation plan are all going to be discussed, and those dates will come out as they're made. One of the questions that was asked at our final meeting was, what is everybody looking at? And one of the things, all of the questions that came through the Think Share and within our things, all revolved around student need, and ultimately, those were the discussions that we had and why we felt comfortable making the decisions that we did and bringing this to you guys as our recommendation. Thank you.
You can stay if you like, we're going to have to do questions and open up to the board.
Yeah, I have one.
Mr. Gillery? Mr. Gillery?
Okay. Yeah, you talked about, I know y'all took this into consideration, advanced academics. I know a lot of our students were one from like East Waco, South Waco, over to West Waco to go to Tennesseon for like Atlas. Are we looking at putting those programs, or like an Atlas-like program, at our other middle schools as well?
So the discussion was twofold. One, we could make, I'll say, GT programs at every campus, and/or we could look at, say, a STEM program at one school, or a fine arts academy at another school, and so what the plan is, is once the board says, yes, this is what we want you to do and approve the maps, we're going to go and research. So what would happen is this, we have twenty-five, twenty-six coming, those programs are not starting next year. That's our research and work year, and we're going to come back and say, hey, this is what we learned, this is what we found, this is what we recommend, and so we'll bring it back to you guys and say, these are the options that we have for these two campuses, and/or this is what we want to do across all three.
So for now, our students are still going to commute, the ones that are involved in Atlas?
Correct, it stays, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I have a question on that. I think it almost would put us back in the same situation if we went and had a fine arts middle school and a CT, then you would still be limited by where you live, so I would want us to explore, how do we offer the same things across the board, no matter where you live? Because I think it's great to say we have this STEAM middle school, but if I live in South Waco, do I miss out if it's at Carver? So I think that would just kind of put us back in that same situation.
And that's what we're looking at, we're looking at whether we do do also multiple GTs across, or if we have those academies, what would happen is, you apply to that academy, you go to that academy. So, I'm making this up, if the STEAM Academy, and we say we're doing that at Carver, and I'm zoned to Caesar Chavez, you would go to that school, because you want to be a part of that, and that's what your pathway would be as you go to high school. I think one thing we have the opportunity to do that I think we can improve upon is our pathways, right? We have opportunities to start them in middle school, because if you put principal programs in the middle schools, then by the time they get to high school, they have more opportunities, and they can explore more. So those are some things that we're going to be looking at as a team, and then we're going to bring it back and say, hey, these are, here's two different pathways you want to consider, let's talk about that. So we will bring that back to you all, but right now, what I tell the team is, nothing's off the table. If we have the opportunity to do something great for our kiddos, let's talk about it, let's do some research, and then let's bring it back to the board.
And Dr. Spicer, I just want to go ahead and echo what you just said. I think what you're hearing from fellow board members is, we want you guys to be innovative, we want you guys to be creative, we want you guys to provide best services for all of our kids, and so I just think, you know, take this next year, really dive into programs, look at what's innovative, cutting-edge, look at what will really serve our students in terms of rigor, academic excellence, and really just want to give you the green light to dream big, in terms of what we can provide our students in every area of our district, so.
I have a question. The committee talked about grandfathering in the transfer situation. Can, is that something, should the board approve this, that y'all will, or have y'all already started looking at the kind of framework for grandfathering and transfer?
So right now, what we have started is just looking at our transfer policy and practices in general, number one, because we know there's opportunities for growth there. What would happen is, once the board says, yes, we approve, we will be looking at grandfathering. So example, that we talked about in committee, but also as a leadership team, Tiffany, the student, is in seventh grade at, how do I say this right? She's in seventh grade at Carver, right? Does she have to go to Caesar Chavez in eighth grade? The answer, and again, we haven't put this in place, but this is just an example, she could stay there, eighth grade year, and then ninth grade year, she would go to her correct high school, okay? So we're talking about kiddos who are already in that school already, right? If I'm a fifth grader and I'm rising to sixth grader, you go to your assigned school. But if you've already started, you're like in sixth or seventh, we're like, you got to stay. But we're going to do case by case, but we want to put some procedures in place that we're consistent and fair, and we have equity and access for everybody.
I would just encourage the administration, because what you're describing sounds very logical, with the exception of Angelo, Keith, and I are all brothers, and I'm in fourth grade, he's in fifth grade, but Keith is in sixth grade, and splitting the family to two different areas, that would be an inconvenience and would be a difficulty, I would assume, for families.
Absolutely, and we've talked about that too, so we do, we went through scenarios, literally, in leadership, but we said, hey, if the sibling is fifth grade rising to sixth, but you're in seventh, and you're going to be eighth, they're going to be sixth, they're going to go with you, right? Because that is, you know, wouldn't make Stephanie, the mom, take kiddos from two schools, you know what I mean? So we are thinking about that, yes, sir.
How do we combat overcrowding? Because I know you guys mentioned about Caesar Chavez being nervous about that, so I'm thinking if, if we have so many students who would have to go to Carver that's at Caesar Chavez now, and they're grandfathered in, and so are their siblings, how do we deal with overcrowding?
So, two of the things that we talked about in the meeting, if y'all want to, you want to take it, or you got me?
Go ahead.
Okay, so one of the, two of the things we talked about was O'Connor-Roberts, they have been in almost all of our meetings. They're going to look at our facilities, and they're going to give us feedback. So sometimes in buildings, you say it's at ninety percent capacity. Well, we have wasted space sometimes, where we can move a wall or do these different things like that, that's one way. The second way is, look at our process and procedure. So when I was a principal, all kids knew that when you go down the A-Hall, everybody's walking this way, when you're in the B-Hall, this way, right? So currently, you have traffic going both directions in halls, so if we say we change the flow, that's a system that we can do and fix, so just different things like that. So they have the numbers to hold it, but they're just talking about the space, because their hallways are not as big as the other two middle schools, so that's what we would be looking at.
I would just add to support what Dr. Spicer's saying, and just to give you a little bit of insight from the meetings, it was almost overwhelming, the response from the committee from the first meeting to the last, in terms of discussing special programs. from the first meeting to the last in terms of discussing special programs, expanding, whether it be Atlas programs or whatever it might be, the grandfathering discussions, all of that, almost to the point of Dr. Spicer having to say, okay, remember, we got to talk about the maps. You know, we got it, we got to decide on the maps. And because we weren't there to discuss the grandfathering in, that's going to, that's a discussion for later. We weren't there to discuss any new Atlas programs. However, it was very important, almost to every single person in the room, that we talk about that stuff. Hearing from teachers at Caesar Chavez, you know, and from other teachers from across the city, saying, yeah, I know that these kids started here and then they go all the way across the town because of this program. I would love to keep them over here. So those were definitely topics that were discussed at length and I think we all were like, we wanted to like dive into that too, but the point was really the maps for this. So if y'all approve this, then I think the hope is that then we get to do all that work on the other stuff that is really important to a lot of people.
Clint, did, Mr. Hart, sorry, did the committee talk about rezoning of any school boundaries? Because I know that we've got some elementary schools that are really, really tight and then I know at least of one school that is roughly at half capacity. Did you guys talk about expanding or contracting elementary school boundaries?
So elementary schools, I remember it pretty much stayed largely the same. Dr. Spicer, I'll let you expand on any of that.
Yeah, we talked about everything. So when we put the maps out initially, nothing was off the table. There was, everybody could kind of draw and say, hey, you know, and so what we did initially is we did like a gallery walk if we will. Everybody gave us feedback. And so if you could just dream. And then after that, we did bring back some maps for them to look at and we brought back a couple, I'll say, elementary choices and that's how the conversation started and that's how we got to West Avenue. So we did like, I'll say, just different activities, like you're running a school lesson, just to get feedback to just say, hey, what are some things we can look at across our system? So we were just like, yes, we can look at elementary, we can look at middle, we can look at high, you can look whatever you want to, but tell us what you want to look at and we'll go from there.
And elementary was the one that kind of fooled us all because it made us feel like, oh, this is going to be really easy. And it was a little more simple and then it got a little more complicated as we, as we went along. But each week, we dedicated to, one to elementary, then to middle, then to high school. So yes, all those zones were presented to us and like Dr. Spicer said, we were given that opportunity to choose a couple of different options each time and it was pretty unanimous each, each time, the majority at least.
And I would also add that as we went through each level, we started at that elementary, but as we went into the middle school, we always referenced back to what we looked at the week prior. So when we were doing the middle schools, we looked at what we talked about with the elementary campuses and those zones, as well as going forward at the high schools. What did we do with the middle school? How does that affect the elementary schools? So we kept all of that in focus as we moved through each level.
Mr. Ochoa?
I think, Clint, you said it perfectly about how overwhelming it was seeing so many community members and teachers and everyone in this room helping make those decisions. I just want to say thank you again to everyone, everyone who showed up consistently. And my only thought on this is when we do start talking about grandfathering kids and transferring, that we also allow those principals and assistant principals in on those conversations so that they, they can give us some sort of ground floor feedback.
Absolutely.
And just to echo that, thank you guys for your work, but I'd also think transportation, definitely.
Absolutely.
I know they've been at the table, but that's, I think that could be a big issue for them, especially depending on, so thank you all though.
I also want to say thank you. I think it was the, one of the first meetings when we were doing the elementary and we were talking about, or the committees were talking about the students at West Avenue and they're like, well, how many fifth graders? And oh, they would have to be split. And once I started hearing the talk around, no, we probably need, they probably need to stay together. We really want them to stay together. They're going to be that small of a class. They probably should stay together so they know people in their middle schools. And I thought, this is a great committee. They're keeping kind of the needs of the students first and I just felt so reassured by that conversation and some of the wonderings and just some of the kind of insights and recommendations that you guys have brought back. Really great, great work and I am just so, I really am so proud of the work that you guys are bringing forth and so thankful. And I also have to give a shout out to Mr. Cheatham. He is, Amazon don't steal him because he's phenomenal at details and organizing and moving pieces. So just so thankful for all of your work. Thank you for playing a part and coming kind of week after week to be able to engage in this work. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the new attendance boundaries as recommended by the committee and the administration.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Thank you, Mr. Gillery. Any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Vedanya?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Gillery?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
Nope.
Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No, ma'am.
Great. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you guys for presenting. Appreciate it. Okay. Now, Dr. Spicer, your administration has a lot of work to do.
Listen, I told them that. I was like, y'all, Thursday night, Friday, it's game time.
A lot of work. Okay. Moving on to item number 10, consider to discuss and take appropriate action regarding the approval of the construction change directive number one to Mazonic Construction for HVAC ductwork upgrade to South Waco Elementary. Mrs. Barretta?
Good evening. Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Spicer, members of the board. I would like to give you some additional background on the proposed HVAC ductwork change at South Waco Elementary School. Do you have my presentation there? Perfect. Oh. Yay, there it is. If you recall, back in August of 2023, we were really struggling to get the two elementary schools in budget. In fact, the board approved increased budgets at each school so we could fulfill the program scope. At that time, we identified several alternates that we could consider should bids be favorable. We identified those at both of the schools. Thankfully, Mazonic received good participation at South Waco Elementary School and we were able to recommend approval of all of the alternates, including the HVAC units, well, eight alternates, which were past their lifespan. Because of the budget constraints we faced, when we were putting together the plans and the alternates, the thought of replacing the ductwork did not enter our minds. We were just thinking, we're going to be doing good just to get these HVAC units done. So this is where we replaced the alternates and then this one right here shows you the, it's going automatic. I don't want it to do that. Go back. Okay, this was, this is what we had in the base bid. You see the yellow? Now it's going to change in a minute. And so this is what the original contract was based on. Now this includes, this shows, the red shows the demolition and I'm sorry about this, I didn't know there was animation in there. The green shows... Can you fix it? Thank you. Sorry. Okay, the green shows what we are adding. So how did this come about? As our quality assurance team was walking through the building, which they do every other week at least with an in-depth review, they noticed this ductwork and wondered if we could possibly replace it because we had some contingency funds within that contract. So we asked O'Connell-Roberts and so they did the design. We asked Mazonic to price it and they gave us a price for the work. Initially, when they looked at it, they believed that they would need a 30-day time extension. Well, as you know, we don't have 30 more days. So we got back to Mazonic and said, no, we need you to revise the price to include whatever resources it needs, you need to get the job done so we can still move in on time. Okay. So then they submitted their revised RPC number 38 and that's what we're asking you to approve this evening. This RPC does include overtime, but we don't know exactly how much overtime they're going to use yet, so that's why we have shown it this way. This change is a challenge to the construction team at this late game, at this late in the game. And it's, there's a lot of work to do this summer regardless of this HVAC change, but it's better to come, to do it now than to try to come back later. And the HVAC system upgrade means that basically South Waco Elementary School will be completely new. There was, you know, pretty much every alternate we wanted, we've gotten and that's really credit to the project team, to the, to Mazonic, to O'Connell-Roberts and for really keeping the project moving and staying in budget.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Does the existing ductwork require replacement?
Well, does it, does it require? No, we could not, we could, we could leave it the way it is.
Is there, other than the fact of it being brand new, is there some downside to continuing? Has there been problems with the ductwork is what I'm asking?
Well...
That prompted you guys to relook at that?
So if you look at the two diagrams you see, you see, you're going to notice on the right-hand side where the green is, that there's four, those are the supply ducts. That's the air that comes into the building. If you see the way they're positioned in the classroom, this is going to ventilate the classroom much better. You're going to have much better air circulation and temperature and comfort is going to be better with the new ductwork than it would have been with the old ductwork.
Again, going back to my question, has there been a problem with comfort and air circulation and temperature?
It is not as good as it could be. There hasn't necessarily been a problem with it. It's functioning, it was functioning considering it's the constraints of the system.
Has there been work order turned in requesting duct...
No, sir. No, sir.
I have a question. What, when y'all evaluated this at the beginning, how did you not catch this back, back at the start?
That's a really good question. I think we were so focused on just getting the project in budget that we just did not even consider we would be able to do this work.
I think it's just hard coming in at the final hour, you know, and asking the board to kind of put a blank check out there. We don't know how much overtime, we don't, you know...
Well, we do know we have a limit on the top. So we have a top limit on the overtime. We just, because we don't, Mazonic hasn't had time because we were moving so fast and they haven't had time to really plug this into their schedule, totally calculate the hourly, the hours that it's going to take because it is going to take some additional hours of work for us to feel comfortable with just to lump some overtime number. So that's why we're doing it this way.
I just, I wanted to thank John Kazanis for being here. I appreciate that. I do want to kind of keep in mind that Mazonic has been ahead of schedule and within budget on this work. And you know, I look at this ductwork in a classroom and I think, most of the women teachers are going to love the extra flow in their classroom. And if it's, if it is right now, if this is the time to do it, it just makes sense to get this work finished and completed. Do we, you know, I'm looking at the benefits, the ductwork prolongs the lives of the system. So is increasing kind of the ductwork airflow with these new HVAC systems, I'm assuming is going to be beneficial for this type of system. I know when you have an old HVAC, sometimes you have old ductwork with that and maybe these new systems require more kind of intake. Is that kind of the thought process on that one?
Well, I mean, if you think about, this is original ductwork to the building. Okay? Back in 60-something or 70-something, when this was done, they didn't have the indoor air quality standards we have now.
Gotcha.
Okay? So the circulation wasn't top priority. It was just volume, get it in the room, don't worry about it. With, with the four supply grills, the way we have now, it's going to be quieter and so while we can push that air through two ducts, it could be noisier and more distracting to the learning environment than if we have four.
Great.
I think one thing, that's what the little clouds represent. You have the same amount of air going into it, but if you look on the left, the red ducts are larger and so it's pushing more volume through that. As you split the inputs, you have the same volume, but they're just smaller pipes and so it disperses it much better. It's, the piping is going to be more efficient than what we have now for sure and how many times have we said, while I'm here, why don't you take a look at this? And we didn't think we would be on budget to where this would even be a consideration, but we thankfully are. This is an expense. We got 50 years out of, however many years we got out of what we have.
South Waco was built in 1998.
Thirty.
Ninety-eight?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two.
I Google and it says 98.
Yeah. Google's wrong. I trust Ms. Davis.
No, it's older than 98.
Forty-three years. And so, yeah, I think this is one of those while we're here, we might, while we're here, we might as well get it done and it's a, it's a sticker shock, but I, I'm in favor of it.
If we didn't do, if we didn't do this and we kept the ductwork that we have, what do you anticipate happens? Do you anticipate that this will hinder the new HVAC system that was put in? Do you think that students will be hiding in the classrooms? By the way, I think both the male and the female teachers will enjoy it more.
Yeah, I was about to say, come on now.
But I'm just wondering...
I could just speak for the women.
What would, what the alternative look like if we didn't upgrade the ductwork?
Well, I think the possibility is that, that it'll be noisy because we are putting more air through those two as opposed to four because the circulation requirements have increased. So we are, can we do it? Yes, but we can do better and so that's why we brought this to you.
Where you sit in the classroom shouldn't determine your comfort either. I mean, it's a silly thing to say, but Jim and I burn up on the ends and all you suckers in the middle say it's really cold.
Okay. Hearing that, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the administration's recommendation.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Do I have a second?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Vedanya. Mr. Grant, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Davis, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Vedanya, is there any discussion? Mr. Gillery, is there any further discussion?
No.
Mr. Ochoa, is there any further discussion?
Well, I just, we have John here, just wanted to see if there's anything he wanted to add from Mazonic's end, perhaps?
They're going to want you to be on the mic.
Sorry.
That's just for all of our television viewers.
Prime Time Emmy Award.
Prime Time, right here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I don't think what was mentioned, but the RFC that's in front of you also includes cleaning of the return duct. So that's the opposite end of the supply that we're talking about. So as far as overall comfort and just feeling like a new building, like the new building that's just adjacent to it, that cleaning is also going to be a big part of the feeling better about sitting in that classroom. So I just wanted to add that, that is an expense that's in that as well. But we're still committed to getting it on time. You know, we had to ask for those days, but it's looking good, so.
Any other questions? Mr. Ochoa?
Thank you. Appreciate it, John.
Mr. Patton, do you have any other questions? Discussion, comments?
No, ma'am.
Hearing none, I will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Mrs. Barretta, we are looking forward to all the newness of South Waco.
And wait to feel the air in that classroom.
We need to get him a desk in that classroom.
Going to go from chair to chair to make sure I feel it.
Moving on to item number 11, announcement. Ms. Cox?
Good evening, President Cordowig, Dr. Spicer, trustees. Principal Attenant was over here cheering with you all about that.
I saw.
They're always giving out tours, so thank you. Thank you to Mr. Kazanis for being here as well. Next week is April. How is this month flying by? How is the school year flying by? So next Tuesday, April 2nd, we will be... So next Tuesday, April 2nd, we will be back here in the Waco ISD Boardroom for a workshop on the strategic plan with board and the district's leadership team. This is ahead of the next community meeting for the strategic plan, which will come up on April 23rd. Next Friday, April 4th, is a student holiday staff workday, ahead of us also having Good Friday two weeks later. And on Saturday, April 5th, a first-time event that I want to call your attention to is Comic Fest. This event will be hosted at UHS. It's a partnership of a CTE teacher there and a lot of other incredible district partners that have stepped up to support him in this vision. From 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, this free comic book slash graphic novel festival will feature authors, illustrators, and workshops as a fun and engaging celebration of literacy in Waco ISD. Again, that's April 5th, Comic Fest, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at UHS, free and open to the public.
Can I add a comment to that? Matt Menefee, who's the CTE teacher over at University, has been working for over a year on putting this together, so we're really excited about seeing what it, what it looks like. I hope everyone shows up.
I will say, I looked at the vendor list, and I saw all these authors, and probably about 15 more than I've ever seen come through, kind of the approved vendors list, and I thought, what is going on? And it was just so encouraging, once I heard that he's putting on this Comic Fest, I thought, man, that is just really cool, and you can tell he's putting kind of heart and soul into this, so it should be a really great event.
Absolutely, and I think a lot of folks have stepped up to support it, so I'm excited for it, too. April 24th is our regular board meeting. That falls in the April 22nd to April 29th early voting window for the May 3rd general election. That's a lot of dates across the month of April, we're already there. Yes, ma'am?
Don't we have an Alta Vista? I just told you.
That, Saturday, April 26th. So when we, when we come back on the 24th, we'll be sure to give you an update on what all is planned for the celebration of Alta Vista and its great history on Saturday, April 26th.
Thank you so much.
I have some breaking news.
Oh, Lord.
Waco High School One Act Play was competing tonight in Red Oak by district. They are advancing to area, which will be at Colleen Chapparrell on April 10th. Abby Sanders won a, won a technical award. Honorable mention All-Star cast was Lily Howell, and the best performer went to Sarah Townsend, and the play is an original play written by the directors, which has been very well received by the judges. The original play is entitled Unshackled and Untamed, The Legend of Anne Bonny and Mary Reed. We're moving on to area.
We pause and cheer for that break.
Congratulations.
Thank you, trustee Patton. I know we were looking at the time, the competition was at, I think they performed at 3, and we were like, how, how can we get there and get back? Thank you for that news. Congratulations.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, I appreciate all that.
President Cordewig, I didn't mention earlier, and I have to, the Men's Empowerment Summit was great this year, and I just want to give a shout out to Dr. Nelson for his vision for starting the Men's Empowerment Summit, and Ms. Yolanda Williams for working so diligently every year to provide that opportunity to our students, and I just look forward to attending and participate in that for years to come. Just thank you.
Great. Okay, now, we are, Waco ISD Board of Trustees, we're not going to close session at 7:37, I guess is the time, pursuant to the Texas Open Media Act, Texas Government Code 551, this point, section 074 and 071. No action will be taken when we reconvene. Yeah, so you don't have to stay. Okay, and we are closed at 8:47.